I'd like to call the Thursday, June 22 regular monthly meeting to order and I ask that you stand for a moment of silence after which Mrs. Williams will lead us into the pledge of allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. This time, Mrs. Williams, would you read the mission statement?
Yes. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. At this time, we will have attendance by electronic vote. Board members, please indicate your preference. Madam Clerk?
Ma'am.
Seven members present, two members absent.
Ma'am. I'm sorry, I was trying to...
Seven members present, two members absent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Have you had a copy of the agenda?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, electronic... Actually, it's electronic vote. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Excuse me one moment.
Ma'am.
Somehow Dr. Whitaker is not hitting the right button somewhere.
And Cardell's checked in.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is registering. Did you put her in the wrong place?
Might've put you in the wrong...
I think you should be there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of consideration of a student representative and an alternate to the school board. Mrs. Williams and I had the opportunity to interview about eight students for the position of the student representative to the Portsmouth School Board and we are delighted this evening to introduce to you the representative that will be named tonight and his name is Mr. Ian Robinson and he's here with his mother. Would you please stand? I'm going to read just something briefly. Ian said, "All my life, I have wanted to change the world for the better, to be like the great leaders of the past who made our world and our lives what they are today. I would like to become the student representative to the Portsmouth School Board because I feel that I can have a hand in helping to make a difference for the school system and my fellow students who are part of it. I'm in various social circles within my school and have connections with a wide variety of students and teachers. I can give an inside view of having situations of helping students and staff how they feel. I can help find what makes a difference to be brought to my attention. This is an amazing opportunity for anyone that wants to be part of an extraordinary organization such as the Portsmouth School Board and I would like to be honored to be the representative and give this opportunity." So congratulations to you. Now Ian, for now on, you will be sitting by Mrs. Newsom, which is right there. You'll have a plaque and you'll be over there, but for tonight, you're sitting. I didn't know if you wanted to make any statement and we certainly want your mom to please stand up and be recognized. I didn't know if you wanted to make a statement to the board. You'd have to come to the podium. You'll be at that podium once a month, so you might as well just get used to it.
All right, well, hey, thank you guys. I really appreciate the opportunity. I'm going to do whatever I can to be the best I can be and help everyone, help students, people, families, teachers, parents, the board, just try and make everything awesome.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if Cassandra Tynes has made it, but she was selected as the alternate. Let me read what she said. "I believe that as an eloquent speaker, I not only represent my school with great pride but also the community. I am certain that I meet the qualifications and have the skills to fulfill this position. If given the opportunity to speak for the student body, I will express the ideas, the comments, the concerns of my peers that will improve our school as well as the school system. As an example, I will work to keep anti-bullying initiative active within the school system. If I am granted this position, I will take full recognition as this prepares me for my future. Thank you for offering me the chance to speak for my peers. You will not be disappointed." So we're very happy that in the event that Ian cannot attend the meeting, that Ms. Tynes will represent the board. So congratulations to our students. We welcome you aboard. And once a month, you'll have your place and you'll get to speak to the board to give your monthly report. Okay? Thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. And a second. Board members, what is your pleasure? Please indicate your pleasure through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Now you're official. Under student discipline, consideration of a readmission discipline case number 2016-17-55, this is electronic vote. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion to reinstate the student? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from the curriculum and instruction, Dr. Anita Taylor.
Good evening. Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, members of the board, Dr. Bracy. I am pleased to give you the curriculum and instruction report for June 27. I would call your attention to the written report that you have received in board docs and in addition to that, I would like to add that we have about 500 students this week who are participating in STEM and science camps from grades three through high school. We also are anticipating a very exciting opening on Monday for summer school and we have so many students registered that we are now taking a waiting list. So just wanted to let you know. Tonight, we have a very special treat because we have two gentlemen who have agreed to come and share information with the board outside of the school calendar and we are excited to have them here. First, we have Ian Lindo and Ian is a rising fifth grader at Victory Elementary where he maintained a very high AB honor roll average every marking period. He's scored pass advance on both his math and social studies assessments. He's an avid reader who loves the Wimpy Kids series. In his spare time, he plays the violin and sings and Ian has already decided that education will lead him in the direction of civil engineering where he hopes to design his own bridge. Ian is here tonight with his mother, Michelle Efat, and his sister, Michaela Lindo. Did I say your name right? Michaela, Michaela Lindo. Would you all stand and Ian, would you come up with me? We also have Ray Langston Clausy, who is 11 years old. He is a rising seventh grader. He is the son of Damian and Tammy Clausy and his grandparents Marty and Danny Langston are here with him as well tonight. He has attended Churchland Academy Elementary School from K through six. He enjoys playing on the Playstation and computer as well as hanging out with his friends. He is an avid soccer player, playing year-round since he was three years old and he currently plays for the Churchland Soccer Club on the U-14 Advanced Hurricanes. He is a member of the National Honor Society for Elementary Schools and he participated in both the Chrome Club and the Math Challenge Team this year. Ray recently received the Presidential Gold Award for Academic Excellence. Ray, would you come up and would your parent and grandparents please stand?
Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, school board members, Dr. Bracy, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, good evening. My name is Ian Michael Lindo and I represent the students, the population of students who are blessed to have the opportunity to take advantage of free STEM-based camps offered by Portsmouth Public Schools. In the last three years, the experience that I can add to my resume are Lego We Do, where we build Lego robots and then we use the computer program Lego Education in order to produce movement. It was an awesome experience watching the design from beginning to end. The theme that year was Safari. My partner and I built a lion who proudly defended the savanna. Space Base. We learned to use global positioning devices in locating a fictional character by the name of Calico Jack, which took us to a journey of Old Town Portsmouth. The camp that I am presently participating in is Code Trackers. Here again, we are using GPS units to uncover different locations where we are greeted with clues that we have to decipher in order to reveal a code. This code will eventually help us reveal the location of a spy. The knowledge that I have gained in these camps reinforces even more than engineering is what I want to do with my future. With civil engineering being my passion, my goal is to one day build the first smart apartment building. I am so very glad that these programs like this are in place. They make it possible for children who may not be able to afford them to have those experiences because you see science is for everyone. I am honored to have this opportunity to speak with you this evening and I thank you for the privilege.
Thank you.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, school board members, Dr. Bracy, and all those assembled. My name is Ray Langston Claus. I am an 11-year-old and just completed my sixth grade year at Churchland Academy Elementary School and will be attending Churchland Middle in the fall. I love science and math as they are my favorite subjects in school. I was very excited when I found out that I was able to attend Starbase programs. These classes are a lot of fun. I really enjoyed the engineering team building activities and the problem solving involved within the classes. This year, we were able to solve problems using basic physics such as Newton's laws of motion to build and launch model rockets in Air Base Atlantis. It was amazing to go through the scientific and design processes to see how high and fast the rockets soared. That wasn't even the best part. We get to take our rockets so we can fly it at home with your family or keep it as a reminder of what you built. Starbase is a really fun place to learn. The teachers are really fun and excited to teach you. They want you to learn all about the parts of science, technology, and math and even help you possibly find a career of interest to you. After attending Starbase, I became a member of Churchland Academy's Chrome and Math Challenge Clubs. I found that I enjoyed challenges like designing, building, and coding. I hope to explore a career in engineering in the future. I had so much fun at Starbase at Air Base Atlantis this year that I attended and just completed the Drone City Camp today. During camp, we coded, flew drones, and visited the Virginia Air and Space Museum where we discussed aerodynamics. I am also looking forward to attending the PPS Coders Camp next week to further my interest in coding and to learn more. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of the Starbase program. I hope the classes next school year and the years to come have as much, have just as much fun exploring STEM at Starbase. Thank you.
Thank you to Ian and Ray and you can just hear the excitement in their voices and I am looking forward to seeing the development of these two young men as they continue to pursue STEM activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the Virginia High School League membership application for Churchland, IC Norcom, and Woodrow Wilson High School for the 2017-18 school year.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? The only discussion I have, I see that we continue to check the box for debate and I was wondering where is the debate team? Is that at Churchland, Norcom, or Wilson?
I believe it's at Churchland. I will have to get back with you. I think it's Churchland.
Because at one time, we were not having debate.
Right. We are checking the box with the hopes that we can revitalize debate. It hasn't been as active as we would encourage it to be. So we have to get it approved by the VHSL in order to even hold it.
Yeah, it was on last year and it's been on the, you've checked the last couple of years. I just wanted to note to make sure that that becomes active.
We will make sure of that.
Because it's an excellent way for students to do research and argue a lot.
I will make sure that we champion that this year. I'm also an advocate of debate.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Board members, please let your preference be known through electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the annual Title I and Title II grant application. You know, board members, you've had the opportunity to review that application and discuss it at our last meeting. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is a special recognition and I would like to ask Mr. Joseph to come, please, Mr. Wiggins.
I can call you Joseph. We've been around 25 years. Ian, brother. Yes.
Mr. Wiggins, we want to say tonight how much we really appreciate all the many years that you have devoted to Portsmouth Public Schools. I mean, you have made everything perfect. Every proclamation, every party, everything that, every communications that I can remember has been perfect and we want to acknowledge you and to thank you for your hard work and your dedication. This plaque, it says, "To recognition of service presented to Joseph L. Wiggins, Executive Administrator to the Division Superintendent, in sincere gratitude for the compassion, guidance, and outstanding leadership provided to the Portsmouth Public Schools Division family over the last 25 years. We wish you smooth sailing on your new adventure with much respect and gratitude." And it's signed by the Honorable Members of the Portsmouth School Board. Congratulations and God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Wiggins, on behalf of the school board, we would like to present you with this 25-year gold-filled pin. It's real gold. We will certainly miss you, but you certainly have been gold to the school system.
Absolutely.
And we don't really know what we're going to do without you, so we will be calling you. You know, I will call you anyway, but I certainly appreciate having had the opportunity to work with you. I know your love for our school division, for all of our children, and your famous statements were, "I will never do anything to embarrass this school board." And I thank you.
Yes.
And I can't let this moment go without saying something about Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Wiggins, from my arrival two and a half years ago, was very instrumental in guiding me in terms of some of the do's and don'ts. You know, he let me know where I needed to focus on when I arrived. I mean, because he's a wealth of knowledge, you know, for 25 years he's been here, you know, he can tell you some things that others couldn't. And he told me about, you know, there come a time when I have to make decisions that weren't going to be popular, but I had to do what was best for the students first and foremost. So, Mr. Wiggins, you are my right hand, you know, my right eye, my right leg, my right foot, and now I gotta learn how to walk again now that you're gone, but I appreciate what you did. You made it easier for me, a good transition from the night that I was introduced as superintendent with your hospitality with me and my family and just saying thank you isn't enough for what you did. I just want you to know and thank you and we'll definitely keep in touch.
I'll end it like I always do. Thanks and be well.
All right, at this time, we're going to see a video presentation by our public information officer. This is Sharice Newsom. Hollywood, here we go.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, school board members, Dr. Bracy, everyone assembled here today. 2016-17 definitely has been a full and exciting year for Portsmouth Public Schools and now that the school year is over, we wanted to take a moment to reflect and celebrate the many accomplishments that our students and schools have achieved. I'd like to thank the Office of Information Technology and the PSET staff for helping to compile this video and we sincerely hope you enjoy it.
Technical difficulties. Oh, not with technology, Mr. Wiggins. We never had problems with technology.
Jamaica, Zane Jackson. La Chament.
Nominated for the Academy Awards. All right. At this time, we'll go to the minutes. Consideration of the minutes for May 11th, 2017, and May 25th, 2017. What is the board's pleasure?
Second.
Motion's been made and second. Are there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to public comment and non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? One speaker, okay?
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Mr. Tom Muttlow.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, board members, Dr. Bracy. I'm here to commend you all on the hard work that you've done all year. It's not an easy job that you all do. I'm here tonight on our graduation. I don't know how it was for you guys on the stage, but it was miserable for us at the Wilson graduation out in the audience. Cold, windy. Audio was horrible. And I just don't think that that's... The time that we graduate our students, I think, is a huge inconvenience, at 7:00 at night. People have young children. Some of us, you know, there's nothing to do after that. It's already 8:30 before we're done. I think the board needs to really take a serious look at why we're the only school division that's graduating our students one class at a time in an outdoor event, venue. Based upon what I saw in the news, that wasn't our only problem that day. I just wish that our graduation, the hard work that you put in, it wasn't a very enjoyable time at Wilson's graduation. Next, listen to those two young gentlemen speak. That's why I have fought for STEM. And we need to make sure that we keep these programs at all costs, summer programs included, because they're our next generation of children. Lastly, I don't know what you're gonna do about Mr. Wiggins. It's gonna be awfully weird not to get that phone call with his voice. I might need to hire him part-time, just to say that. But again, I commend you all on the hard work that you guys have done all year. It's not easy. Continue on. My son is done, but I'm not.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers? Okay. Do we have any speakers regarding board agenda items? The next item on the agenda is the monthly report from the Human Resources and Operations. That's Mr. Scott Ziegler, Director.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams. Thank you for this opportunity to, again, address the board and for another fantastic school year. This month, I would like to bring attention to our wonderful retirees, and we were able to honor them this month at a retirement banquet on June 17th. And the combined service of these retirees to Portsmouth Public Schools was over 1,800 years of service. And we had two retirees with over 50 years of service. And our longest-serving retiree, Ms. Brown Voice, most recently of IC Norcom High School, served us with 52 years of service. And we just want to thank them and publicly commend them again for the work that they have done. The rest of my report is there in your written packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Ms. Williams.
I wanna ask where we are. And I see in here where we talk about bus drivers, where we have eight drivers with new classes that start at the 12th. Is that eight drivers in each class, or is that eight drivers total? And, and I know this is the time of year where every school division goes on a blitzkrieg for bus drivers, so I'm just wondering what our, what our numbers are in our driver pool at this time.
Let me get back to you July 10th, please. I don't have those figures in front of me.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is electronic vote. Consideration of continuing contracts for 2017-18. Board members, you have had a copy of this. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made and second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of the Pay and Classification Plan 2017-18. You've had a copy of this to review. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made and second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of the election list 2017-18. You've had a copy of this to review. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, indicate your preference by electronic vote. The next item is consideration of the Employee Transaction Report for June 2017.
Move for approval.
Right. Motion's been made and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ziegler. At this time, we'll have the Budget and Planning. Consideration of the Financial Budget Report for May 2017. Storch.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, members of the school board, Dr. Bracy. The May financial report has been provided previously. I'm here to answer any questions that may be.
Board members, any board members have any questions? You've had a chance to review it. Motion's been made and second. Hearing no discussion. Board members, indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
And you will make sure that the City Council gets a copy.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of revised grant budget for fiscal year 2017.
Yeah, so on June 13th, City Council approved ordinance 2017-44. This was to increase our grant appropriation for the repairs for West Haven, wait, excuse me, West Haven Elementary for the Hurricane Matthews Repair Project. You will see that the amount that City Council appropriated is $19,000 less than what was submitted by the school board. And this is the amount that's related to the general fund that will have to go towards this project. They've requested that the funds just be used out of the general fund instead of transferred with the other project costs.
Okay. Motion's been made and... Do I have a second? Motion been made and second. Any discussion? Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. This is not necessarily about the financial piece. My concern is gonna be about the timing of these repairs. So, it may be a Mr. Ziegler or a Dr. Bracy question, not so much for Mrs. Dorch. But the timing of these repairs, if school is not able to open September, whatever that day is, do we have a plan for West Haven? And you can follow up with a report next board meeting. I understand it has to be done. My concern is the timing, and if something is not done in time and it impacts school opening, what is the plan for that? So, I would like to, I'd like a follow-up regarding that when we meet again in July. Please. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of a request to utilize the Alexandria City Public Schools' Cooperative Contract Number 2015-004 with Vol. School Solutions Incorporated.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made and second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please indicate your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear the superintendent, and he will give his monthly report. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. I'll be brief, but I would like to follow up with the preview of the video that Sharice gave as a caption of 2016-17 school year. And we have to remember that, you know, Sharice came on board after the school year, so she really jumped in and hit the ground running to start chronicaling all of this information. As you can see, you know, just thinking about it, looking at the video, you forget some of the activities, but as you think of it, it's like, wow, we've really done a lot this year. So, I think that she's done a great job of capturing that for us, and I know it'll be out there on YouTube for others to view. And I think it already is. But I think overall, you know, I wanna say, this being the June meeting, that I think we've had a good school year. I know that we're still waiting to find out officially where we are with our accreditation ratings, but I think right now, we're all positive about the outcome of that, and we'll share more about that at the school board retreat. But I do wanna thank the staff, my cabinet, the senior staff, the teachers, parents, and the students for being a part of us having a good school year, because we just can't just say this is the way it's gonna be and it automatically happened. So, we wanna make sure that we thank everyone involved with it. And we're looking forward to an even better 17-18 school year. So, the planning for that has already started. So, you know, we, once, once the kids leave, you know, I know there's this misconception that we don't have anything to do during the summer, but that could be more totally false, because I think this is our busiest time of the year, is getting prepared for the upcoming school year. So, we're looking forward to that. Couple of the things that I wanna mention is that, you know, we have our, the school board, Virginia School Board Association's Conference on Education is July 18th in Richmond. So, some of you may be, may be attending. And we will have our annual school board summer retreat, August 4th and 5th, at IC Norcom High School. I also would like to share publicly that, starting next week, we will begin our 10-hour, four-day work week, and that will run through Friday, August 11th. So, all schools and administrative offices will be closed on Fridays during this timeframe. And that's about it. I think the other information I have for you, just to review some, some letters that were sent to me that I wanted you all to, to see. But unless anybody has any questions, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. The next item on the agenda is consideration of certain school board policies. I know that all of us enjoyed reading all of the policies. Yes. Motion's been made and second. Do we have any discussions about... I like the one about gifts. You know, I think we ought to, we ought to be able to receive gifts. Don't you think that would be a conflict of interest? Boy, there was a lot, a lot of policies that had good reading. All right. Board members, no more discussion. Would you please indicate electronic vote, please? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The last item, well, the consideration to authorize the division superintendent to hire teachers and other critical personnel, July, August 2017. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made and second. Discussion, Ms. Heinz.
And I know I moved for approval on this, but I really wanted to get to the discussion piece. Is there a way, and I guess it would be, if it's the board's pleasure, can we... Is there a way that the board can review administrative positions before they're hired?
I mean, I think the, I mean, I think that we have to leave that up to the superintendent. We hire a superintendent to manage the administration, and I think he has done a very good job in sharing with us, in a timely manner, those, the appointments and reappointments and those that are resignations. And he has, we give him the authority to make those decisions, to move people as he sees fit, based on performance and other, other issues. So, I don't see any, I don't, I mean, it's left up to the superintendent. Mr. Lamb? And then Mrs. Williams. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Bridgeford.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get it right one time.
Bridgeford, parent.
There you go.
Parent. I was just gonna ask...
I'm only kidding.
I, I got it. I was just gonna ask Ms. Heinz, through you. Your question, what, what's, what are you thinking? What's your rationale?
Part of my thought is, we've always done it, so I just wanted to ask a question about, do, do we think that we need to review this as a board? And if not, then we can go back and discuss it later. But I just think it's, it's always been done, and so I'm, I like to question things. Just because we've always done it this way doesn't mean that it has to be done this way. And so, maybe we'll bring it up in retreat and have discussion about it for a later date.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, my concern, I thought this was done only for the summer months that we were out.
He has the authority to put it on in August. Yes.
Because normally, the board is off during the month of July, and if he needs to make a decision, then we're not there. So, I thought that was, it's usually only about a month or so.
Right.
Is what I thought. Is that correct? Okay. I, I don't have any problem with, you know, allowing him to do that. That's just my personal...
And most of the time, he will email us.
He still will, he will still be on the board.
Yeah. All right. I don't see any comments from any other board members? Board members, what is your pleasure? Please indicate by... Oh, you've got a...
And a second.
And a second. And you got the discussion. You've had it. We've had it. So, you can vote. Electronic vote. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Now, board members, your opportunity for comments or concerns, concerns. Now, I want you to look at the clock. It's 7:59. So, I, so based on not hearing for any comments, do I have a motion? Oh.
I got one.
All right, Dr. Wood. I got three.
Just two quick comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Two quick requests. Concerning moving graduation to an indoor venue, I agree. And if we could start looking at that this summer, so we can plan ahead. And then, secondly, trying to get online registration for summer school. Lines are very long. People are waiting in line for hours. So, if we could get that accomplished for next year, that would be great. Thank you.
Ms. Heinz, again?
With, and I wanna say Sharice and Dr. Bracy, thank you for that year-in-review video. It's kinda like when you sit down to do your summative at the end of the year, you realize all the stuff that you've done and all the stuff that we've done. And I say "we" as a board, but really, it comes down to the boots on the ground to making it happen. So, Sharice, Dr. Bracy, and your staff, thank you for a wonderful year. It seems, it seems old hat, but every time you see it, it's, it's brand-new again, you know? So, thank you for that. And with that being said, the schedules of, of items that come to the board, there were several, like, preschool graduations or crossing-over ceremonies or choral, and I'm talking about throughout the entire year, choral presentations, National Junior Honor Society stuff, that board members... Choral presentations, National Junior Honor Society stuff that board members may not get invitations for. And then we get questions about why were we not there? And my statement has always been, well, if we don't know, we can't be there, or we can't make it. So I'm just wondering if there is a way that we can put together a schedule of... A calendar of events. We know when corals are going to be. We know when National Junior Honors are going to be. We know when... I mean, we know now, hopefully, when graduation is going to be in August. But for those things that are set in stone, and once we get them on calendars, is there a way that we could do one unified calendar for a board? But also a unified calendar for our school division? Because especially for sporting events, because my child is elementary for high school, I've got to hit on three different high schools, and I've got to drill down five pages to find us an event calendar for sports. So I'm just looking for one well-rounded calendar that has academic, maybe athletic with it, or even just a separate athletic calendar, but that can be shared with board members a month ahead of time, so that we can look at our calendar and we know where we're at, where we're about, where we want to hit, without having to open 50 emails, check, you know, 19 different school calendars, all that good stuff. And I know that is a nightmare, but also, logistically, that's a nightmare. But if we're putting it, if we can get it on our website somehow, I think for parents that have kids, students in multiple schools, that would be a blessing in disguise to them too. So I just want to say thank you. Ms. Nelson, to hear your students talk tonight about Space Base, I think I've met Calico Jack once or twice, so I'm glad he is still out and about and haunting the waters in, you know, some shape, fashion, or form. So other than that, y'all have a good summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you Chairman Parent.
Very good.
Just a couple things. One, right along with Starbase, I was able to go out today. And watch drones. Unfortunately, they weren't outside, but they were kind of in their mock simulation of Mars, the planet Mars. And I was so excited, because it looked like they were going to start one. And I'm anticipating, because I am not tech savvy. And then, all of a sudden, my phone rings, and it's my wife. So I had to step out to see before it actually rose. But it was neat watching that whole process and actually putting together computer programming. Some of the younger kids were actually doing that. It's just a wonderful program, and it adds so much to us academically. Just two smaller things here. And we can do this at the next meeting or so forth, but I would like that we get an update, if we can, on PBIS with regards to how well it's coming along, where we are, the data to show if it's being effective or not. And then the last thing, and this is something that would probably take some planning on our part, but in the summer retreat, we've started a tradition, which I think is a good thing, with regards to we invite principals to come, and we hear from them. I would like for us to do something either... I don't know if we can do it during a summer retreat, but maybe sometime even during the year, to have something very similar, but have and invite teachers to come and get input from them as well. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Board members, I asked Stamos to send out an email to you, because I really do need your input for the board retreat. And in order for us to get that published in the paper in a timely manner, so the public has that information out... Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, I would need... I'd like to have that feedback by July 10th, so we... Dr. Bracy and I and Mrs. Williams can put together the agenda for the retreat, okay? And... Fourth and 5th, and it's going to be at Norcom. And, Ms. Stamos, one other thing. If you will get with Mr. Robertson and Ms. Tynes, Ms. Williams and I have to do the orientation, and I'd like to do it before they get busy with summer, because I'm sure that we're going to have vacation, you're going to have vacation. So we need to have that scheduled. So if you can get with them and find out some dates that they're available, and then you can share those dates with Ms. Williams and myself, so that we can bring both of them in for the orientation, okay? Anything else that should come before this board before I adjourn?